Do you want to leave this?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, come.
Greg Scott.
Here.
Mark Serbuck.
Charles Wiltie.
Present.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Here. Uh additions or corrections agenda?
Um, I got some news about the our bids at Parks and Rec. So I'd like to bring that up.
The under old business?
That'd be.
Or unfinished unfinished?
Unfinished be fine.
Parks and Rec?
And uh it was suggested a little earlier about new chairs. So I want to bring it up on the agenda sometime so.
What do you have the under unfinished business?
Yeah, I've got one.
Go ahead.
Floor under review of minutes um November thirteenth, two thousand twenty five closed month, which were presented.
Yeah. Close minute. Anything else?
Well, make a motion that we approve the agenda with additions.
Motion Commissioner Scott.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie, any further discussion? Uh favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries declarations of conflicts of interest, any concerns?
No, I mean.
Uh review of minutes, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty five, regular meeting minutes.
Every beauty minutes make motion support.
Motion Commissioner Wiltie.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Scott, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries item four B, November twentieth, two thousand twenty five, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
I've read the minutes, motion support.
Motion Commissioner Wiltie.
Support.
From Commissioner Serbuck, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries close meeting minutes from uh November thirteenth, two thousand twenty five.
Make a motion to approve the closing minutes.
Motion Commissioner Serbuck, support from Commissioner Mahew, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries comma and agenda items only, any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Uh, no public comment on the phone, correspondence, we have none, consent agenda. You guys okay?
I'm agree with all of them.
Me as well. You okay with that?
Yeah.
We, Tim talked about each one of these. Uh resolutions, A seven, A through seven G, resolution to appoint members to the Ogumah County Planning Commission, resolution to appoint members to the Ogumah County Zoning Board of Appeals, resolution to appoint members to the Joint West Branch Community Airport Zoning Board, resolution to appoint members to the Joint West Branch Community Airport Zoning Board of Appeals, resolution to appoint members to the Ogumah County Construction Board of Appeals, resolution to appoint members to the Ogumah County Land Bank Authority Board, resolution to appoint members to the Ogumah County Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors.
You're dead that good.
Someone have a, someone want to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion Commissioner Scott.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbuck. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries item eight A, new business, administrator slash time off accrual calculation. Um I got a email, uh phone call, email slash phone call on Friday um asking for some direction as far as uh what to do and the reasoning that was is because Commissioner Serbuck and I are on the personnel committee. Unfortunately, the personnel manual was not all that helpful uh with the questions. So that is is something definitely that uh we will be addressing in the near future. Um how I'm understanding that uh questions is our administrator that is our former administrator slash controller had a PTO and vacation available, pretty large balance, fifty six hours of vacation time and two hundred and seventy three hours of PTO time. That total is really close to about sixteen thousand dollars. So the question is, is that straight pay or is that following like department heads, they get fifty percent of sick time? Is it an hour, uh seventy, eighty hour week? So definitely moving forward with the next county administrator slash controller, the contract needs to be much more specific. Our payroll needs to look at it. Um a a question that I've asked in the past is when we get these emails that say I'm going to be out of the office, I'm going to be available by phone, is that a sick day, is that a vacation day, is that a straight pay? We never clarified remote, um I'm not going to be available, there was days that not available at all. There was a period of time initially when there wasn't even notification when when the individual was not there that was brought forward and then it changed moving forward, we did all receive emails. But there was no clarity to that when they were out but available by phone, what does that mean? Um I'm looking for opinions, I'm looking for, this is a pretty significant uh lump sum of money in my opinion. Um again, there's nothing negative, but we need to make sure we all agree with this, what our decision is, because the contract is very vague. Um, I did ask if if I did ask in the past, and then I asked again when this came forward on Friday, was time recorded um when there was a doctor's visit, a a procedure, whatever they be may be? Um, who who was putting that information in, was it requested, was it not requested? Just kind of throughout the process, dot in our I's and cross in our T's. Um I understand it's a salary based position, it was, and it's going to be in the in the future, but bits and pieces of it were pretty unclear. So um I did ask Tracy to be here since she is uh does the payroll in case we have any question. Um, what are your guys' thoughts?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh first off, I appreciate the way that you've handled this, I appreciate Tracy being here. And yes, we got to learn from some things if they're not uh really done the way it should be after the fact, which I know, you know, this was our first county administrator, um but we definitely got to make sure moving forward that we put the right uh plan in place and and I agree with you, you know, because there was a lot of days where we would get a message available by available by phones, you know, well, what does that mean, was did you, was that a day off or? So um I would like to know, you know, what days were submitted as days off? And I I mean, I think we have to do a little bit of investigation, this is nothing against him, I respect him.
Hundred percent.
Um and I think, you know, and I I know you said the same.
But if.
I think it's something that we have to definitely uh look at a little bit before we just pay this out, I think we've got a.
We can't pick and choose who we look into or what we look into, agreed, this is something that's, this is a large sum of money. So I've been asked Tracy, are there cure, uh cure balances up to date?
Um I took a quick, we'll get it this morning, um his vacation balance should be accurate. Um, he was granted seventy hours in on his anniversary and he's taken two days this year so far of vacation. So fifty six hours should be accurate for vacation. The PTO, um, I pulled his history, there's not a single, not a single hour taken off in two thousand twenty three. Um, in two thousand twenty four, there's a few days. And then I think two thousand twenty five, it got better. Um, I know we balanced back in two thousand twenty three, right before we set up, you know, UKG, because he was not requesting the days off like he was supposed to in the system. So he gave me a spreadsheet of days that he took off and so we we balanced on his hours to get that up to date. I don't know that it was really fully impacted in two thousand twenty four, I'm not sure, I I don't know. I guess my thing is I would go down to see him, he's not there, sometimes Brock would say, oh, he's not in today. I don't know if he's at a conference, I don't know if he's at a meeting, it's none of my business, I don't care. I I I know you guys get some sort of email, I think, when he is off, but I don't, so I can't verify his hours, I I don't know. I can give you his history and you guys can look at your emails if you have them, I.
What are your guys' thoughts, Commissioner Serbuck?
I would agree with Commissioner Wiltie that we need to take some time and look into this and maybe touch base with Tim and see if he's got the spreadsheet, I mean, he's, you know, Mr. meticulous about that kind of stuff. So maybe he can shed some light on the one, you know, these days off or and things like that, so.
I I mean, our UKG system was set up to do this very thing, so.
Right.
Um, that's where, I mean, for me, at my respective, that's what needs to be recorded, that's my only way of knowing.
And it was not.
I don't know, I mean, like I said, two thousand twenty three, there was not a single hour taken off from May all the way to December, not a single hour. So if you guys are sure he was here every single day in two thousand twenty three, then that's great, but there was not a vacation day or a sick day in all of two thousand twenty three. Well, March, I guess, because he uh he gave me his thing, I think in March of two thousand twenty three, so from that point forward, the history here in UKG shows no hours off.
And the reason.
It started a little bit in two thousand twenty four and then I think it got a little bit better in two thousand twenty five with the system.
The reason this was brought is because on Friday, the last day, um he asked for this balance, correct, or?
And then the thing is, he gets PTO, any other department head gets sick and vacation, um. It didn't really specify what PTO was, I mean, he gets vacation and PTO. So I look at PTO, that's what the sheriff's office gets, that's paid a little different, the other difference is this is all front loaded, so if his PTO is supposed to be the equivalent of sick, he got his full entire year's balance in May. Like me, the rest of us, we get one posting a month, we get seven hours a day or a month. So he's already been front loaded for the whole entire year, so do we pro rate what he's been? You know, I mean, like I said, May, he got seventeen days, the rest of us only get twelve sick days, so he got extra days, it was preloaded. If I was to leave right now and my balance was in May, I would only have the six, the six days, you know, he's gotten seventeen days. So there's a lot of questions and like I said, it's not addressed anywhere, that I don't know if it's at full rate, at fifty percent, any other department head would get paid sick time at fifty percent. Uh this is a label, considering it's labeled PTO, so it's just a lot of discrepancies. The other thing that I found in the new contract was Greg and I sat in my office for an hour, we watched the YouTube video, maybe this contract, just to make sure we didn't miss anything, that that was not discussed, but the contract says he's supposed to be working a minimum of eighty hours a week. I didn't do anything, I didn't know that, I.
Forty hours.
Change anything.
Yeah.
Forty, I'm sorry, forty hours a week, eighty hours.
Wow.
Sorry. So he's earning his time at seven hours and he's requesting it off at seven hours, but he's expected to work eight hours. Again, another discrepancy that needs to be fixed before the next.
Contract.
Contract, I mean, there's just a lot of little things that I have to try to work out now, so.
Yes.
I think we should seek counsel from our attorney.
Yeah, we definitely, I want to get everybody's opinion.
Yeah.
That's my opinion, we should ask them for their opinion.
Commissioner Scott.
Well, this is a totally different job than anybody else has in our county. Um, no, we didn't spell it out to the the last D on the on the contract, but I think there's a lot of lot of days that we were notified that he was working remotely and I think that that job, contrary to a lot of jobs in the county, could be worked remotely. Could he do his spreadsheets and can he do all this stuff remotely? Yeah, I think so. Um, I I don't, you know, there was inclement days that, why travel if you if you can do everything at at home or someplace else? Um, I this doesn't, it, by, any, any decision we do here doesn't set any precedent at all because it's a one, it's one job that's that's one job in the whole county, it doesn't, he's not a department head or that position is not a department head, it's not an elected position um in my, in my uh uh opinion. Um, as far as I'm concerned, we'll pay it, we go on to the next contract and we'll make sure that we do it uh a a different way and we'll spell it out to the next candidate that if you're going to work remotely, you need to tell us that, uh you need to, we need to specify what is a day off and what is not. Um, now, our election officials, they have vacation days and things like that too, aren't they? No, they don't, because they're elected and they are on a salary. So like our our clerk then, in that case, she could take a day off and work remotely and, you know, it could happen, I don't know how much of your office you can work remotely or not, but say the sheriff, the sheriff, he could work remotely and 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 yet not have to tell us that he's not there, you know? Uh, I think this job was the same way, it just, we're going to learn a few things here and the next contract will do differently. We're going through this right now, the Parks and Rec Board, we terminated our agreement with their caretaker at the nature park and that was scarce information in the contract we wrote up in two thousand eighteen and we weren't sure if we had to evict him from the house with paperwork or not. But we finally, the the attorneys helped us out with it, so the next contract with the next caretaker is going to specify a lot more stuff, you know, and I think that's the same thing with the county administrator. I think we just need to bear down and really dive into the finer points of the contract. But as far as I'm concerned, uh just pay it out.
Commissioner Wiltie.
Oh, I think we need to do some more due diligence and uh um I'd like to get some more information from Tracy and I, I think we talked, you said, Commissioner Serbuck, we need to talk to lawyers and, you know, again, I, you know, this is nothing against him, but I mean, I think we need to look back, we'll find out some more information on this before we pay this out. This is a substantial amount of money and I think we need to do a little more diving into it.
We we need to not base this per, this this decision on personal, sixteen thousand dollars is a lot of, a lot of money and I have done a little bit further digging into that. There are days where uh and you guys can can look into it as well, so I'm not the only one on the chopping block here, but uh there are days where uh there was not available and there was not uh any time taken. So I I I think there was a good enough rapport and relationship that uh we need to have conversation with Tim um about this, his opinion on this, maybe this is just an oversight. Um.
Can I make one more comment?
But uh it hopefully we don't need, maybe playing it safe would be legal counsel. Um I I I with the relationship that we had, I don't foresee it coming to that, but uh uh again, I do agree with Commissioner Scott, we definitely need to make some pretty significant changes in the next contract and we really need to treat everybody fairly and the same. Commissioner Wiltie.
I mean, I agree, I think, you know, Tim left on good terms, I know with us, um and I think that we should reach out to him. He's in Texas right now, but when he gets back, reach out to him and maybe, you know, maybe he'd be even willing to come up here um before he starts his job in Graca County and we could, you know, sit down with some of them dates and just look at it and talk and figure this out. You know, and if he's not willing to do that, that's fine, we still can do a little bit of uh, you know, our investigation on our end, so. But I definitely think we need to look into this.
Thanks. Is there any urgency, like there's nothing in this contract that I seen that there's any, like thirty days to pay this out, like I, did I miss anything?
There's nothing, there is nothing to contract, what's left of it, yeah.
Okay, we have a little bit of time, so there'll be some discussion. You have anything to add?
I agree that you need to get it um clarified in your, in your contract, my contract um that I had specifically said how that would work. Um, and even though people are salaried, if you're given a vacation and sick leave, I think there's a responsibility to that they're letting payroll know when when they are taking a vacation and sick day. I I reported that every uh pay period when I took a sick day or a vacation.
Okay, there'll be more to come on that, uh claims, claims, nine hundred and sixty two thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and thirteen cents.
Yep, Commissioner Serbuck and I did it and uh I'll make a motion to uh to pay the claim.
Commissioner Scott.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbuck, any further discussion?
Mark made some notes for us.
Commissioner Serbuck.
Of course.
Well, he asked her to pay out a payment.
Yes.
I think it's fantastic, I, the public, there are, there's some bills in there that we.
Uh payroll came to, payroll in Fringes came to five hundred and ninety one thousand, six ninety two, forty eight. There was a bill from Animal Control there for a dog that was injured and the local vets would not see the dog, so it had to be taken to emergency. Veterinarian to the tuna, one thousand, one dollar and sixty five cents. Our quarterly liquor tax to the NMRA, the Northern Michigan Regional Entity, thirty four, eight, thirty, forty seven. Airport appropriation of forty two thousand, three hundred and thirty nine dollars, twenty eight cents. Uh, energy council was fifty one thousand, three fourteen twenty and I'm glad Tracy's here. I talked to, part of this is under a new grant with North Coast Legal, which does clerical for several counties. Evidently, Will Engelman, and I have had discussions with Will Engelman yesterday and again today in regards to this, that bill was thirty six thousand, five sixty four, twenty, that is covered under the grant, but evidently there was a mix up when the budget was done, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tracy, I'm trying to, um, some line items got switched around somehow, so we're going to need to, we're going to need to look at that budget.
That budget needs to be.
Yeah, um, because that does put it over budget. The other thing is in my discussions with Mr. Engelman, he is more than willing to take and come in at committee of the whole along with the people that are actually sitting in the office doing this clerical stuff um to explain what that program is, how it works, and it's all grant funded, there's no county dollars involved. We're basically a fiduciary like we have been with Homeland Security, it's just a pass through kind of thing. But he is more than willing, actually, he wants to come in, because he says it's about time somebody asked me what, how this program works, quite frankly. Um, but anyway, if we can take and um get him scheduled for committee of the whole, I will let him know when we meet committee of the whole dates and see if he can come in and talk to us, if that's what the commissioners would like, I would certainly like to and I would hope the rest of us would too, so. Um, sure.
Any other notes?
Yes, insurance, uh we had accident fund and some other ones, uh hundred and twenty thousand, six seventy one, fifty nine. The jail uh had one of those from Blue Cross, which is that matching where we pay Blue Cross, so we get the Blue Cross rate when our inmates go um to two hundred and twenty nine thousand, six ninety and ten cents.
I have a comment.
Good.
Uh so to to exploit our LA meeting, and I do appreciate that undersheriff brought this up to us, um he told us about this situation with this dog and that uh I guess it was some places weren't open, the timing of it, so they ended up having to take it to Traverse City. Um, at that time, he, all he said is there will be additional expense. Well, I said at the meeting, well, I definitely want to find out what that's going to be because we are paying that shelter twelve thousand dollars a month. So this is the type of stuff that goes back to, it really bothers me. Again, I keep saying, you know, we're paying a private entity taxpayers' money and I understand the county does not have an animal shelter, we need one. I know it would cost a lot, a lot of money if we had an animal shelter, we owned it. But again, we are paying a private entity twelve thousand dollars of taxpayers' money, okay? I'd like to see them here more, I know we do get some reports, but now we're getting bills of one thousand, one hundred and fifty five dollars for an animal and it doesn't sit well with me. I I I'd like to talk to someone over there, um I'd like, I've said this before, I think I said it at our budget meeting. I'd I'd like their controller or somebody to come in, I think with the money that we're giving them every month, we should be able to do some type of, I don't know if you want to say the word audit or what it is, but our constituents should have the right to know that we are making sure that all of this money, we're spending twelve thousand dollars a month is going for what they're spending it for, that's a lot of money. And now this bill to me just makes it even more that we need to, I feel we need to get more on top of this. And I I don't want to pay this bill until we talk with them and find out more um about this situation. I guess that's all I have right now.
That's, Commissioner Serbuck.
My comment regarding that bill is it's not that veterinarian's fault that we have an issue with.
Shelter.
They, exactly, they did what they needed to do for this dog, I don't think we should withhold money from them just because we want to get more information as to what's going on with the shelter, so I mean, I I would disagree with not paying the bill.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
I I, yeah, I agree, I shouldn't, now that you said it that way, yeah, we should pay them, you're right, they have nothing to do with what I brought up and the concerns I had, so the bill should be paid, but I still think we need to have a a meeting with the shelter and I'd like to see their, you know, their controller, whoever takes care of their day to day finances. Um, I'd like Karen to be involved, Fabian to be involved, and I really think we need to get a little better grasp on this. Um, but you're right, that bill does need to pay, that's, has nothing to do with.
Any further comments on claims, Commissioner Scott?
Well, I think, I think the bill needs to be paid, but not by us, I mean, they turned that dog down, we pay them to have a shelter open and we take a dog there and they turn it down, now wait a minute, you know, it's just like Commissioner Wiltie says, twelve grand a month and you turn a dog down? You know, it's, it's their policy to have a no kill policy, uh it's their policy to take, you know, so they should have took the dog and they should have took the dog to the vet or whatever they want to do with it, but they should have took a assumed the ownership of that dog and then we shouldn't have to pay it, now, now that bill for the shelter is thirteen thousand dollars for the month. And, no, uh I think that, yeah, sure, the bet gets made, but by somebody else, but that's fine, we'll pay them this time, we'll learn.
No, one more comment?
Go ahead.
Can we ask Fabian to reach out to them and say that we want, we expect them to pay this?
Oh.
And if they don't want to pay it, then they.
No.
Did you ask the minister?
Uh, I didn't think they were going to take sick and broken up dogs at that place, they were just going to house the other ones, I've, I don't know, maybe I'm misunderstood.
That's what they did, they refused it and now we're getting the vet.
But I'm saying before, when we did this, they weren't going to take sick and.
Okay.
Yeah, this isn't the first time we got a vet bill, but.
I believe that was in their paperwork.
Go ahead.
Know that.
Is is any of this addressed in the contract that we have with the shelter, does anybody know?
That's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, I, you know, without knowing what that contract says and maybe we should renegotiate it to, you know, to address these issues that we're having with these vet bills.
So why don't we?
They're refusing to take dogs.
Why don't we ask them to come to committee of the whole, we did ask for more information, which we've been receiving on our iPads, I think Paul had that communication, I believe Paul sits on that uh committees, but can we invite them, the director, to a committee of the whole meeting?
Sure.
Whenever they're able to make it.
So it's possible.
Yes, um let's, let's, lesson learned. Uh, I, I, we've had vet bills from them previously. Um, maybe it's sitting a little sour this time because of what we pay them and there was months that we had minimal to two dogs or zero to two dogs, so I get that twelve thousand dollars is is hard to swallow, but their policy is no kill and a dog was sick, they refused it, they have that right.
So, so why can't we tell them that we expect them to pay it?
I guess that's what we need to do and find out what the rules are, if it's in the contract.
They didn't accept the dog, if they accepted the dog and then took the dog to the vet, then yes, I agree, they're responsible for that, that bill. They did not accept a dog from us.
Who took the dog, didn't?
The sheriff's department took it.
To Traverse City?
Wherever the.
They didn't accept it and then take it, they said no, when we took it.
Bay area.
I think it was Bay, I think it was one on.
Year Bay City, I don't.
The one that's on M eighty four there, I believe that's.
You understand what I'm saying, if they took it and then took it to the vet, I agree, let, make them pay it, but they they did not, they did not accept the dog, if I'm understanding this scenario correctly.
Right, that's probably understand.
I remember what Paul said, some, so that means in the sheriff department, took the dog to Bay City, I thought it was Traverse City.
Well, you know what, Bay Area Pet Hospital is Traverse City, it is.
I think we need to.
I had one of my dogs up there, so yep, that's the name of.
Paying a deputy to take the dog to Traverse City, I mean, come on, you guys, this is.
This, this.
We already paid the deputy, we're paying the vet, this is before the vet that took care of the dog.
We're also paying a deputy to drive to Traverse City, I mean, we need.
Paid him.
To address this, I know we already paid him, but we need to address this.
Took him off our street.
So this doesn't happen again, we got to get this figured out.
Let's, yeah.
This is a.
So let's, let's have them with committee of the whole and and learn from our mistakes. Uh, Tracy, do you have anything about that billing thing you want to add?
I don't know, I heard exactly what Charlie heard in the budget, but he, like.
Well, caught bold on claims.
Marcus Serbuck.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Yeah.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Nine unfinished business, Parks and Rec, Commissioner Scott.
Uh, was new chairs under new business?
Yes, so is Parks and Rec and new chairs is, I put under unfinished business.
All right, Parks and Rec, uh I think we brought it up a couple meetings ago that we were bidding out electrical upgrades in the RV park and on an RFP. Uh, we had one bidder, uh Rise Electric out of Standish bid on it. Um, we had to send all the bids into the DNR, so because it's their grant money and they did approve it. And uh so that we're at a point now. And, uh, so that we're at a point now that we can, we'd like to award the bid. Uh, it just needs a vote of the commissioners, I don't have a contract readily available, but if we could, um, on a condition, vote it passed on a condition that we get the contract written with the vendor, and if we get this project started.
What's the urgency? Are we not going to have another meeting before you start this project?
Winter time is the emergency.
So, I have anything on page, how much?
Well, it was a hundred and.
I'll support Commissioner Scott's motion, so we can have discussion.
It was a hundred, yeah, okay.
I didn't hear a motion, he was. Okay.
I'll make the motion to award the contract. It was a hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Whoa.
So, yeah, yeah, well, our, uh, our, our, uh, DNR grant is eighty thousand dollars. And, and, uh, we've got, uh, West Branch Township DDA has, uh, promised us a hundred thousand dollars for the, uh, project. You know, originally, it was sewer and electric, and sewer came in at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to have sewer at all the lots, but we, we couldn't do that. So we had to talk to the DNR and scale back our, our program, so it's to increase electricity, it'll be fifty amp at every site, you know, fifty, thirty, twenty at each site, and it all falls within the money that we've got with grant and the two grants, the grant from the township, that the DDA is giving to us, and then the eighty thousand dollar DNR grant. So there are a few other things that will be done, that we're going to make two of the lots in the park ADA compliant with some pavement. Uh, so that a wheelchair can roll back and forth on, on that, on those sites, but the, the biggest portion of the whole thing is the electricity throughout the park.
Questions, Commissioners, Wiltie?
Um, well, I think it's great that the DDA's putting in money and that this grant's putting in money. That's a lot of money, and I'm just hearing that hopes and dreams and all comes together, I need to see something on paper, and I need to see an estimate, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, I, I don't agree with just approving something, just going, going on.
Well, it's in writing someplace, I, I don't have it.
Oh, I had a buddy that had a store and he paved his parking lot, and when he did, he has to sell it and remove snow if he's liable. On dirt, he's not, but on payment, he is.
Well, the park's closed in the winter.
Okay, I'm just saying that it's difference between the dirt and payment.
Yeah, it's just a couple, it's like two lots, two camping lots within the, and it's really a, a sidewalk, a paved sidewalk, what.
Yeah, like you said, I'm just.
Yeah.
Throwing.
But the, the, the park is closed, it's closed right now, it closed the end of October and it won't open until, um, May, I think.
Commissioner Serbrook?
So.
I would like to see us get moving on this, I said in Parks and Rec, and this, this grant has drug out for three years at least that I know of. You know, again, as Commissioner Scott said, unfortunately, we just got the one bid, I'm trying to see if I can find the specifics of the bid, I.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Wiltie here, I'm all in favor of this, I, absolutely, I think that's fantastic, you guys got some grants, you got some money that you're saying you're getting from the DDA, but I, I would never feel comfortable with a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar bid without seeing something that, that you guys have agreed upon and signed and, and moving forward with.
Okay, all right.
Uh, I mean, I don't think anything in the next, next, I mean, not a whole lot of people, if you can have it to us within two weeks, it's definitely not going to be an issue.
Uh, we can, matter of fact, we can, I'll have Fabian dig it up wherever it is, and, and he can email a picture to you, to everybody, and everybody can see it, I mean, it's all, we did it in a public meeting anyway, so it's all public information, so, yeah, no problem, we can do that.
We have a motion with, we, do you support it, Craig?
I did.
Well, I'll rescind. I'll rescind the motion.
I will support your resumption. I'll rescind my support.
Do we need a roll call, Matt?
It's not a motion anymore.
Okay, new chairs.
Well, we were, just sat down, and tonight, Mark sat down lower than everybody else, and it was somebody mentioned, maybe we were about time for new chairs, and it wasn't me that said that. And I think so, you know, I, it would have been nice to take the thousand dollars that we paid for that dog to pay for the chairs, but, you know, anyway, um, yeah, I, I think, you know, I, I pulled these other chairs over because I get sick of there to grab the bad one. Tonight, I think you got the best one, good, you're the best one here, so.
I don't get the grant, we need to be comfortable, we spent a lot of time sitting in these chairs, I don't, does.
I, I tell you, I go to the city meetings, and you got some really nice-looking city ones, high bank, and they even got logo on it.
Commissioner Scott, get us a bed. What chair you would?
Could I just like, add something?
Yes.
When I was on the board previously, that was when the city of West Branch got those chairs, and they were very reasonable, even with their logo embroidered on. I mean, I'm talking like maybe four hundred dollars a chair is what they paid for them at that time. Not for thee.
Not for my bad side, I'll tell you what.
Not for an, not for ergonomic office chair, that's bad at all, and.
Give me a bed, my chair's not that bad.
Well, then we're going to get rid of that one.
He's surprised how much you have upstairs, see him over.
Controller report, do you have anything, Fabian?
Sure, um, just want to let you know that I've been working with the County Treasurer to draft, uh, federal financial internal controls and procedures that are, it's needed for federal grants. I met with Judge Williams to discuss some contract issues. Uh, met with the county clerk and staff to discuss our working relationship and responsibilities related to accounts payable and payroll. Ended meetings of the Transit, um, Veterans Memorial Park Subcommittee, and the, um, House Advisory Committee. And we submitted the, the, uh, contractor selection process that uh, Commissioner Clark, uh, mentioned, and also putting together the, the request for proposals on the H-back, um, uh, project that you folks, uh, wanted to go out for, for proposals last week.
You've been busy.
It's been a busy week, yes.
Thank you. Uh, elected officials, department head reports, clerk?
Um, not really anything specific, just that we did have a meeting, we, um, formulated a game plan on how we're going to kind of split the load of things that Tim did prior, so that Fabian can focus more on things that he needs to do, and I'm going to do more of the um, secretarial stuff.
In the transition?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Cool.
That's appreciated.
Thank you.
Uh, any elected officials, department heads, nobody else in the room, uh, on the phone? Think anybody?
I think Fabian's done a good job, and I think we should give them Thursday and Friday off this week.
A manor's on the floor, motions for adoption, Commissioners reports, Commissioner Wiltie?
I've got a few things. Uh, Mills Township meeting this past Tuesday, um, a lot of, a lot of good things going there. I know I've had a lot of consistent reports of good positive movement there in Mills Township, our highest populated township in the county. Uh, this coming Thursday, I want to thank Tom Angel and volunteers, uh, he's putting on a Thanksgiving dinner, uh, completely free um, at the, um, Chamber Hall in, in Skidway, so thank you, Tom Angel, and all the volunteers, I think that's fantastic. Um, our blight officer, who, who comes here quite often, um, is just making a huge impact over there, it's, it's great to see. Um, I think a lot of people are realizing that he's coming down the street, and, uh, a lot of people are starting to take a little more pride in their yard, and uh, it's just really great to see that, um. Renovation started on the new township hall, uh, we bought the old, uh, clinical building, I'm sure David, where you worked at for a long time, uh, there on Rifle River Trail. So a renovation started there, so it's exciting that, uh, we don't have an exact timeline yet, but, um, it will be nice when we're able to get moved in over there, that's going to be a great building. Uh, Transit, we had a Transit meeting last week, like, um, Fabian said he was there, um, for the month of October, uh, we gave, uh, four thousand fifty-three rides. Um, we will be closed on Thanksgiving and this Friday, as the county is as well. Um, I want a big, uh, big shout-out to, uh, Ray Blamer, um, many, many years of service there at the county.
Appreciate it.
Shaffer.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ray Schaefer, my bad. Uh, Ray Schaefer, uh, he will be retiring first of the year, um, you know, we do have a new mechanic that started there, and we're really excited about that, but, uh, thank Ray for all this years and years of service there at the, at the Transit. Um, big discussion is the millage, you know, we still don't know exactly what we'll be asking for on that, but we know the importance of the millage, uh, but we were happy to announce, which we have told you guys, that state and federal funding has not diminished like we thought it would, with, with large decreases, so it's going to be very important to really make sure that number's right, we know our county residents are taxed out. Uh, but the, uh, Transit is an important entity, um, to a lot of people that cannot drive, do not have vehicles, and we need to make sure that we carry on with the best service we can out there. So that will be a very big topic next month, um, for more millage talks. Um, we had our housing meeting, which Fabian was there as well, um, Neighborhood three-point-oh mini-session is going on right now as we speak at City Hall, we have a speaker there from MISTHA. Uh, twenty-five to thirty people were going to attend that, um, you know, again, I know I've stated one-point-five million dollars in the past year, uh, MISTHA money, state money that's come into Ogumwa County to build, uh, houses, um, and, uh, small apartments, which is good, so we've got some good, uh, traction there, so tonight's meeting will be interesting, uh, I hope it goes real well. Uh, EMS meeting I had last week, uh, I was on negotiations, uh, with the undersheriff and, um, Terry, our director out there, our union negotiations have been agreed upon. Uh, the new mobile EMS truck that I talked to you guys about, that's being paid with the equipment millage, hopefully will be on the road within the next thirty days, nice to see that on the road. Um, MSU Extension, we had a Zoom meeting this past Monday, uh, recently they started a Friends of MSU, it's a, a committee, uh, that's going to, that's being formed to help bring more exposure to MSU, um, extension to our county. Uh, we all know that there are a lot of great, uh, benefits of having it, but again, I've been saying this for a couple of years, just a lot of people just really don't know what those are, and need to figure more ways to get that out to our constituents. And then also, they're already thinking about the millage, um, which will be coming up next year. This will also help play a role in exposure, uh, to hopefully get that millage passed. That's, that's all.
Commissioner Scott?
I really don't have anything, I've been, you know, I was going on and down the last week and missed quite a few meetings, and and I just went over to Parks and Rec with you guys, so.
I don't have anything as well, Commissioner Mahew?
Oh, I went to, uh, backing. They're sending their nose or noise ornaments back in for the finals review for the lawyer, so they're hoping to get that finally. Uh, comments? They're going to put, I don't know what you want to call it, but they're going to check the wind, so, so, Wyngus Farm, see if it's ready for wind charges, if it's, to obtain that.
We have a meeting on that tomorrow night.
Uh. Row City. One of the chamber members stepped down, and now he's a part-time worker for the city, one of the bosses. They got a cool deal, part-time. That's pretty much all I got.
Commissioner Serbrook?
I'd like to start off with the Veterans Memorial Park Subcommittee. Unfortunately, uh, Commissioner Wiltie or myself were available to attend, but Fabian did, but they worked on a survey, and there's some of these on the back table. Um, prosecutor contacted me this afternoon and asked that I take and, um, tell you about the survey. They have a plan to take and distribute these surveys, and they'd like them back by December the eleventh, which is pretty, uh, short timeframe, but, um, there are copies of it, and it is asked demographic information, and then what people would like to see, um, at the Veterans Memorial Park. Uh, Commissioner Wiltie and I attended, uh, Well Van CMH yesterday, uh, the keynote speaker that we had was our, um, soon to be our CEO of, uh, Community Health Association Michigan, Alan Bolton, right now he's assistant, um, gave us an update as to the status of the PIHP bid out by DHHS, there's already been one court hearing on it. The second one is going to be December eighth and ninth, I believe it was, um, where the judge has already said that he is not going to rule from the bench, but will be issuing a written opinion on legality and other things of the PIHP bid out by DHHS. Um, I attended airport, not a whole lot new at the airport, um, just, we went over the financials and things like that. Um, DHHS, I attended that, nothing earth-shattering, Eric Commissioner Scott and I were at District Health on Monday. That was yesterday, wasn't it?
Yeah, we were there.
It seemed so long.
Yeah, exactly, uh, approved the contract that we had negotiated with the, uh, union employees there, it was just a, uh, like I, I said it before, two-point-seven-five percent, that was the only, uh, it was a wager reopening for the contract, that was the only issue, um, did claims. Commissioner Wiltie already covered Transit, which I sit on, and just as a reminder, if anybody is interested, when we get down here, MTA is happening now with the West Branch Township Hall.
Do you have a public comment, any?
I just think one more comment, I'll, well, a couple. Um, when you guys decide balance on Tim's payout, I guess I would also need to know if you're following other department head, that full rate or fifty percent? I know you talked about, um, determining what would be considered days off for the next contract. I just want to remind you, you have four department heads that are salaried that do, and I don't see any problem with what they're doing, but when you determine what kind of day should be requested off, or whether it's sick or vacation, it might be that I need to update the personnel manual back.
Agreed.
Because you do have four salaries.
And I, I think before, with the next contract is, is, uh, passed, you also need to look at it as far as from a payroll's perspective.
Yeah, I can at least let you know what's built in UKG, or what means to be built in UKG.
You're the expert in that area. Any, any public comment on the phone?
The only thing I got is, what about the personnel manual?
Commissioners, Serbrook and I are going to meet on that fairly soon, I'm going to be in contact with them.
Think we'll have one before the next.
We, we reviewed draft number four.
Yes.
All right.
Two months.
We will.
Very good.
So, just want to make, uh, wish everybody, uh, safe and happy Thanksgiving, and I want a motion to adjourn. Support, all in favor?
Hi.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Tracy.
You blowing the hose, I think?